Here. And move this all the way down.
Um, I am having some technical difficulties that I have my assistant helping me with here. So if you give us two more minutes, we'll, we'll get started.
Patient. My technical difficulty resolve. Call this rapid city area school study session to order. Uh, show you that we have a roll call and FYI. We're not taking any calls, so, alright, roll call.
Troy Carr.
Here.
Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Christine Stephenson.
Here.
Donna Moore.
Here.
Michael Berklin.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Swan, we have not heard from. Katie Urban.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I have not. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to, so we will have to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Um, to approve the proposed agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed agenda. Roll call, please.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Katie. Motion carries six zero.
Alright, I have not received any, um, blue sheets for person wanting to speak to the board, which means the board doesn't have any response to nobody speaking to the board. And at this time, we'll have, um, we're ready for item six, board discussion. And at this time, we'll have onboarding training of Super Eval.
Good evening, board. Uh, thank you for coming tonight, uh, to the, the study sessions where we're gonna walk through, uh, some onboarding, then, then we'll get to our, uh, mid-year review. Uh, one handout that, uh, you have is a board evaluation guide. I wanted to make sure that everyone had access to that. It's a step-by-step, uh, piece to getting in. Uh, as, as you know, we, uh, are working with Super Eval. Uh, and you'll be hearing from Rob Seidelman here in a moment to, uh, bring a, a very structured, or a mo- a more structured process to, uh, evaluating the superintendent and the CFO. Um, so that was, uh, something that I had heard and, and, um, this is a, a way for us, uh, as a board to, uh, I do a very thorough, um, proper, uh, evaluation process. So, uh, again, what you have in front of you is, uh, just a guide. And then Rob's gonna highlight and, and show you a few pieces within the system. So, um, Rob can, are you ready to go?
I sure am, Dr. Strasser. Uh, thank you for making time for me, distinguished board members. My name is Rob Seidelman. I'm with Super Eval. Um, and it's, uh, my pleasure to be here tonight to help get you all s- set and, and ready to go with Super Eval. S- uh. First things first, um, I wanted to share my contact information. And I'll be sure, and Dr. Strasser has it, of course. And also, uh, my director of client success, Joe Pernick. Um, I am in the Pacific time zone. Joe is in the Eastern time zone. And between us, we have you covered on, um, all hours. So, the first thing, wanted to make sure that everyone is able to do is to log into Super Eval. What you're going to do is go to supereval.com. In the upper right-hand corner will be a, a blue login button. Once you, uh, hit that login button, you will be taken to a welcome screen where you will enter your email address and password. If you have, um, not entered the, uh, the system before, you will have received a, a welcome email with a temporary password. And you'll enter that temporary password and it will, um, prompt you to, uh, create your own password. Um, yeah, going forward. And that will be your permanent password. If anyone hasn't received, uh, a login email or, or, uh, temporary password, please let me know and I will make sure to get that to you. Once you're in the system, and we'll go, go into this, um, on the actual site so you can see it. Your name will be at the top of the, of the screen, along with your title and the school district and the year. On the left-hand side, you will see a dropdown menu that will have the names of the superintendent and CFOO and also your board about self-evaluation. It's gonna be important to make sure that you are in the evaluation, uh, of the person you are attempting to evaluate. So, uh, not to confuse those, uh, those folks. The board evaluation looks completely different, so that will be, um, easy to, to distinguish right away. But the, um, uh, superintendent and CFOO evaluations, um, go through the sa- the same steps. So, the annual goals have been set between, um, or have the, I hope the annual goals, or maybe they are in the process of being set between the superintendent and CFOO and the board president. Um, once that is in place, uh, the su- superintendent and CFOO engage in their self-evaluation and reflection. At any given time, they may submit that evaluation, um, their self-reflection and self-evaluation back to, to you as board members for review. So at this point, I'm going to switch to a live mode and show you what that looks like. So login up here. Email and password. And here we are. So this is a board self-evaluation. I'll get into that in a moment. But you see the dropdown here. You see your, your name at the top. Your title, district, year. When you have more than one year under your belt, you will have a dropdown for school year. And here you will have superintendent and CFOO and board self-evaluation available to you. Once the superintendent has completed his self-evaluation, you will be prompted, um, to head to step three, which is really where, uh, all, all the board members besides the board president will spend the bulk of their time in the board review and evaluation. You'll find your name in this list and you'll see the, uh, the green, uh, plus sign and you'll create a new evaluation. At this time, in the first, the first ti- oh, sorry, Katie, you have your hand up. I apologize.
Um, no, it's fine. I was just wondering if I was the only one that didn't have the board, um, and the dropdown.
You don't have board self-evaluation?
No, I don't think any of us do.
Okay. Let me get that, let me get that, uh, taken care of for you. Thank you for letting me know.
Yeah.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, and please, I'll, I'll try to keep a better eye. Sorry, it's, uh, I'm on two screens. Um, when you initialize your evaluation of the superintendent and CFOO for the first time, you will have the option to pre-populate the evaluation with the superintendent and CFOO's, um, responses. Meaning that if Dr. Strasser, uh, rates himself at a certain, uh, at a certain level in his evaluation, that will pre-populate into your evaluation. Um, from a best practices perspective, um, if all other things being equal, I recommend, um, pre-populating with the superintendent's response because it enables you to see directly how the superintendent has, has assessed himself, how the CFO has assessed himself. Um, and then you can make, uh, deviations from that, uh, from that rating kind of based on your observation or concurrence. So once you have done that, I chose to pre-populate, you'll see the, um, the evaluation screen. Um, the evaluation screen is headed with the, um, the standards that the superintendent and CFOO are gonna be evaluated on. And you'll again see how they've evaluated themselves. You can see how the superintendent, uh, the, the, how the superintendent and CFOO have, um, reflected and provided evidence for their, for a particular standard. And you can access that, those, uh, the, that evidence and take, and look at it directly as well. None of this, none of these steps are required. But in terms of best practices, we believe that it's important that every board member provide comments at the, at the domain level. So at the, at the, the level of relationship with the board, for example, in this case. This is where we think that, you know, the majority of your feedback would go. You have the ability to, um, to add feedback and comments here. You can add, you can sign in date. Um, and it auto-saves for you. And of course, you can erase and, and add in other, uh, as you go. Now, if you were, the only exception to that is if you were to rate, uh, someone more than one step away from where they rate themselves. Actually, one step or more away from where they rate themselves um, in the lower end. Um, we believe best practices again are for you to enter comments. You'll see how this changes to required for a hundred percent completion. Again, nothing is strictly required. No one can stop the process from moving along. But, um, if you are going to rate someone, rate someone lower than they rate themselves, we think it makes, uh, a lot of sense to provide some, some constructive feedback, um, in that, in that area so that they know how best to improve going forward. Um. When you have entered, you'll, you'll start to see these, um, these, uh, different standards fill up to a hundred percent. And once they do, in the magic of, of the internet, they're at a hundred percent, your work on the board review is complete. And you can return to the dashboard. There's nothing more for you to do at that time. What will subsequently happen is at a certain point, uh, the board president will close the board, individual board reviews and head into a consolidation of, of board member, uh, comments and feedback to finalize a consolidated review for the superintendent and CFOO. Um, at that point, um, you as a board will, will, um, work through your, your individual feedback, decide how best to present that and shape that for presentation to, um, to the superintendent and CFOO. Are there any questions on, on the, uh, board review of the superintendent? Yes, Christine.
Um, is that consolidation done in an executive session in person? A, a discussion amongst board members or how does step four play out?
Um, it's real, uh, what we've typically seen is that it plays out in person, uh, with, uh, with board president, uh, in this case, uh, leading the, uh, leading the consolidation, going through the document live on, um, on the platform.
And, and yes, that would be in an executive session where, where you would review that and, and have that conversation.
Thank you. That, that makes good sense.
Thank you. Bishop Carr?
Um, for our real-world application, are we, um, missing a person that we are going to be evaluating? Or are we not using this form?
Uh, w- we, we will for in-house counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not.
We're just, right now, we're just trying to get it established for, uh, superintendent and CFO. And then we'll, we'll add that in, um, soon.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there are any further questions about, um, review, uh, evaluating superintendent or CFOO, like I said, I'm happy to answer them. Now, well, Christine.
Yeah, thanks. I'm sorry to interrupt. My, my question is maybe, uh, about continuity and year after year. So it's the, it's the board president who works to establish the goals in this model. Is there a spot in like, step five to establish new goals for the coming year? Or, um, is that every year new goals are selected or just established? I guess I'm wondering timeline. Like, when do we select new goals or?
No, that's a, that's a great question. Once, um, once the, uh, the, the evaluation is complete, um, uh, you can't, you can, uh, the, the calendar set resets for us on June 30th. So the new year will be available for you to, to set goals and, um, move, move forward with the, preparing for the next year's evaluation. You will also have access to the look back, both at, at the level of the annual goals. You'll be, you would be able to see what the annual goals were in the previous year from, from this view. And also be able to look back at the evaluation as a whole at, as, at, in the previous school year. Um, so that, uh, you can always be moving forward with thinking about how to evolve those goals and, and me- move them through the, uh, can, the continuity of the next year.
Yeah, I love that. I love the continuity part, cuz it's so hard when board members ch- change over.
And, and I think one of the things you'll, you'll wanna clarify is our timeline. And we had talked about this, um, Bishop Carr, uh, and my, and myself, uh, with, with Rob earlier. And, and what is the timeline, uh, that you want for, uh, the evaluation to be completed? And then what does that look like moving into the next year? And i- in coordination with strategic planning a- and all those steps. So really trying to lay out a better process of, uh, of evaluation, of goal-setting, uh, alignment with, uh, strategic planning and, and where you wanna be as a board and when does that happen? So we haven't really had those conversations, but hopefully this is a spur to, to more of that. And, and I believe we had some ideas on, on how to do that. So, uh, we can look at that, uh, more coming up.
Bishop Carr?
Um, Rob, I was under the impression that step four is an automated process. We were talking about how, um, Kelsey does that now by taking our individual comments and, and kind of putting them together. So is it not the case that it's automated?
No, I'm, it is automated. I'm sorry if I, I miss, if I misspoke about that. The process is automated, so we're in that. As soon as you hit, this is the board president view that I'm, uh, showing right now. As soon as you, as board president, mark this complete, it goes to the consolidated view. And note that it doesn't matter if most of the, if, if some of the, the things aren't fully complete. You can move to this view no matter what. In this consolidated view, and what happens in the consolidation is that, um, you'll have a conversation based on an overall view of this. So it's all compiled, right? It's all put together like, like you said, Bishop. Um, but what you, what you will want to do is figure out how best to share that feedback with Dr. Strasser and, uh, uh, CFOO, right? So, for example, y- you can have all of this laid out, all of the feed, individual feedback laid out from all of the individual board members. And it's, it's, uh, you know, with their names and their time date, timestamps and everything. But for example, if all the board members are saying the same thing, then it becomes easy to say, to take one, uh, one, make one unified statement. Um, and you can do that by editing right here. And it opens up an edit window and you can choose which of these, uh, statements you want to keep. uh, statements you want to keep, which you want to edit, or how you want it to present. Sorry. Yes, Dr. Strasser?
And, and I think that's where, um, you can give access to, uh, in-house counsel, uh, to Kelsey. And, and if you want her to do similar to what she's done in the past, and that's kind of bring this to more concise and, and, and clear, um, components and, and summary, you could, you can do that. So you, uh, again, you can choose to give her that access. And then that can really clean up the document that you want to share out, um, uh, with the superintendent and CFO.
Okay. So does that mean it's a two-step process? I'm trying to just, um, understand based on Christine's question of what's actually happening in executive session. And that's why I ask if this process is automated. So even as the collection is automated, then are we having a meeting as a board to, to finalize it and then presentation to, um, the person being evaluated?
I would say that's accurate. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I know that I was given 20 minutes. Um, if, uh, we want to, to push talking about the board self-evaluation, um, I don't want to overstep my time.
The, the point of that board is there's a component for, um, a self-evaluation piece that would be annual. Uh, that as a board you could, uh, provide input. You could kind of say certain things about, you know, direction and goals, progress that you've made, and you could put that in. And that would be, uh, just part of, uh, a really reflective practice, uh, as board members. So that is, that is something that, that we can look at, um, at, at another time. Uh, I think the main, main thing, uh, was focusing on just giving you a better understanding of how this, uh, works and, and how it could be beneficial. So.
How long is that presentation?
How long would that take, Rob?
Um, I can work through, uh, uh, the board, uh, self-evaluation. Be about ideally 30 minutes or so.
Okay. So we'll need.
Yeah, we can do that in different, um, we'll look at, at another study session or information, um, time.
All right. Uh, Ms. Clappin?
Um, hello, everyone. I was wondering, Rob, just how, it's a logistical question more, I guess. Does, so does super eval, like, does someone send the information of new board members? And how is access like moved and, moved and removed? Like, is it on that June 30th? Do things flip over? Or because typically our board election, our installment of new members is like mid-July and that could be a little off, but.
Of course. That's a great question. So there are two ways that we, uh, we can, um, manage that. There is a district clerk role, um, in, uh, in, uh, I believe in your, in your, uh, instance in your, of, of super eval. And that district clerk has the ability to change folks into different roles that depending on those elections, um, and to remove people who are no longer in position, et cetera. The other option is to call me or my colleagues and we can get that set up for you really quick. There's no, it's not tied to, um, a particular date because we have many, um, we have many partners who have board elections later, even later than yours. So that's not a problem at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really do appreciate your time, um, and, uh, I'll leave my contact information in the chat. Um, if there are no more questions and, uh, right now, and happy to answer any or hop online and walk you through anything in the future.
And I do. So every board member, you all have your passwords and all that. Okay. Donna does not. And Jamie, you do, you, you have your account set up. Okay. So, um, Donna can't, is that something we can get done tonight after? Or resend her? Did she get a?
I can help you, Donna. I mean, I think it's just a matter of finding it in her trash. And I, that's what I had to do. It was pretty easy.
Okay. All right. So we'll get that done and then we'll find out about Walt. All right.
Thanks, Rob. I appreciate, uh, taking the time to work with us.
My pleasure. Anytime. Have a great rest of your session and I look forward to talking to you more in the future.
Thanks. And if, if I could, uh, just reiterate, I think this, um, this process, uh, moving to a digital is, is good from a structure standpoint. I think it helps, uh, establish your boundaries in terms of, uh, what you want to see out of a, a superintendent and, and CFO. So if you've got, um, the, the, the core things that you value the most, you can really identify those things and, and you can put that into the goal setting piece. But you've also got the, the rubric parameters. Um, so I, I think there's just a lot of value in, in moving this way and giving you clarity, uh, a voice of, of what you want to see out of your leadership. So appreciate you taking the time to walk through it here.
Ms. Stephenson?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Strasser. I feel like this is such an important job of the board and it has always been so slapdash, like because there's board turnover and, and that's just the nature of the board. So I'm super appreciative of anything that can make this job more systematic so that we don't drop the ball. The other thing I wanted to say to the board is one of the valuable things I think about superintendent evaluations is the conversations that are had. A lot of times like my memory is jogged. That's why I asked about the consolidating at the end. Like I do want to have a conversation because sometimes I'm like, oh yeah, I forgot about that. That was pretty great, you know, or whatever. So, um, I appreciate it. Thanks.
And, and I think that'll really come to fruition when, uh, you all have your input in. The consolidated piece comes and you have the opportunity, uh, as a group in executive session to, uh, work through that. And then, and then bring that final piece and have a conversation, uh, with the superintendent and the CFO.
All right. Next, strategic plan mid-year review.
All right, board, as we shift, uh, shift gears, uh, we wanted to bring the short, uh, excuse me, the mid-year review to you. Didn't we talk about that? So we'll get that information up here. The, uh, mid-year review, uh, obviously in coordination with our strategic plan and, uh, short cycles of improvement that we've been, uh, talking about periodically. So, uh, the first thing that, uh, can I move it or? Okay, sorry. Hey, there we go. Why we're talking tonight about it, a timeline, and I believe we've showed this to you before, but from a timeline standpoint, uh, you know, we talk about goal setting typically August, September. And then, uh, the green is really the work that the leadership is, is doing around those short action, uh, cycles. So, uh, how we, how we kind of keep evaluating and looking at, and trying to find those improvements. So, uh, January, February, that's when we do the mid-year review. Again, March, April, kind of that 45-day, uh, leadership progress. And then in June, uh, bringing, uh, hopefully a more robust, uh, report, uh, at that time. So that's the general timeline. The purpose of the mid-year, uh, reflection is, it is really about, uh, three, three key things. Uh, so the first paragraph talks about bright spots. The second piece, a, a, a comment on collaboration and then continuous improvement. And when we talk about bright spots, it's not just, um, about all the things that are, that are great. It's also identifying challenges that may be hindering the progress, uh, and, and looking at solutions. Uh, so we, we take that look, um, and, and when you, when you think about bright spots, collaboration and continuous improvement, we're really looking at a learning opportunity tonight to see how, uh, how we're able to communicate out our progress, um, in, in this manner. So we do, we do really, uh, come tonight to identify things that we need to scale. And when we talk about scale, those are the good things, um, because they're working. Uh, what adjustments we need to make. And, and that usually comes from, well, we learned this and we realized, uh, there's a barrier or that was just the wrong thing. And, and we want to, of course, be upfront about that. And then of course, what adjustments can we make as a result? So, um, through this, uh, as an organization, we want to be committed to continuous improvement that has leaders focusing on a culture of progress, not on a culture of, of blame. And I believe we've talked about that with Casey before. And really, um, I, I think this is an opportunity to learn and bring out that culture of progress and, and be very, uh, upfront about where we're at and, and how we're moving. So, uh, I really, uh, appreciated the mantra that we use of learning leaders, leading learning organizations. It's kind of a mouthful, uh, but it's something that I share with our principals quite frequently. And, and if we really want to be an organization that moves, we have to be, uh, learners and we have to figure out, um, because, because learning isn't, I mean, it's very multifaceted. So, uh, and I think it really feeds into that culture of progress. And, and this allows us to use our scorecards. So, uh, when I reference scorecards, uh, the handout that I gave you, um, this one, if you have that, uh, you should have seen that because we've been working on that since, um, you know, mid, well, June, basically. And, and as we, uh, look at it, you can see, uh, the different components, the metrics, the baselines, where we predicted we would be in 24, 25. So, um, so that's there with, with each pillar laid out. And, and we haven't touched this, uh, since the start of the school year. So I want to make, make that clear. This is the, as is from, um, from the start of the school year. Uh, but we use scorecards and then the short action cycles of improvement. There, there are stoplight, uh, colors that help us identify our progress. Typically, if it's red, that's not good. Um, and we want to, uh, hopefully learn, uh, from that so we can move, move things out of the red. But, um, in, as part of that, what we pursue strategic actions that are focused on improvement that is realistic. And by realistic, I mean, uh, we understand barriers. And we want, we want to be ambitious, but we have to be, have a balance when we look at our goals and our actions. Uh, we can't, we can't shoot for the moon because when you shoot for the moon, you're gonna, um, typically not achieve it. And then everybody gets frustrated. So we, we have to be ambitious within that, that sense. And yet, uh, being realistic is, is understanding, you know, things that, uh, that are hindering us and, and how do we overcome those things? So, um, again, that's how we, how we look at things. So I put some questions here that I believe leaders in a culture of progress ask. And I think this is a good way for you to think about the work that we're doing and what you're going to hear tonight. So, uh, what have, what have you learned? And, and as we go through, uh, hopefully that's coming to fruition. And, and again, you can think about, uh, how do we clarify that? And are we able to communicate that well enough to you? Uh, what are those barriers that we're encountering? What is getting in the way, uh, of improvement? And then do we have the resources we need to accomplish, uh, what we're trying to accomplish, uh, within our pillars? And then, and I think the last question is really, um, one of those good questions. Uh, I think Casey brought it to light and, and I've been doing this for a long time, but just, it's a very simple phrase, you know, what does better look like? And, and I think we need to ask ourselves that more frequently. Um, so that's, that's what we're striving for, uh, tonight. Uh, so to, to kind of transit, transition this into our pillar work, please, please take tonight as a learning opportunity and, and understand that you can be curious about what, uh, those of us who are closest to the work are learning, what we're doing, uh, and how we're trying to move things, uh, to scale, like I said before, with, with the good stuff that, that we have accomplished. So. All right. Let's move to, uh, student pillar. You guys can join me up here. That'd be awesome. I don't know. Do you want to, just come over here? It'll be good.
Um, I noticed a bunch of students came. Welcome. Thank you for coming. And if you want to move over so you can have a better view, um, please do.
So our student pillar is, uh, in my, my sarcastic approach would be the JKJK group. Um, so we got, uh, Jen and Kit and Jen and Kira. So, sorry, uh, poor humor on a Tuesday night. But, uh, they've been really awesome at, at walking through, uh, the many pieces of the student pillar. And, uh, when we look at strategic planning, a lot of times the student pillar is the one that, that gets a lot of the attention because we are here for kits and, and we want to see, uh, achievement happen. So, uh, um, the first thing that I showed you here in this slide are the metrics. Again, 23, 24. I left 24, 25 as TBDs because we won't have full results till, uh, till June. That's when the majority of these will be filled in. Um, so it's presumptuous to put in things at the moment. But, uh, saying that, that doesn't mean, uh, we're not looking at, uh, where we are currently. And, and that'll come to light here. So I'm gonna turn it over to.
Dr. Strasser?
Oh, sorry.
Now, the, the sheet here says.
It does say, yes.
Yeah.
But the chart is different.
Right.
Did you just explain that and I was sleeping?
Maybe. Uh, why, why it's different is because we wanted to set a goal of where we wanted to be at the end of 24, 25.
Carrie on?
So. Yes.
Okay, good. Christine didn't get it.
Correct. Sorry if I did not clarify that. So yes, on the handout that I gave you, we, we had to fill in last, um, July, August, whenever we, we completed this, what our goals were for this year. And so this is what we're striving for.
But we should write target for it on top of this.
Yep. And I didn't feel it was, um, prudent to put them in the chart that you see on the slide here. So.
But are we gonna get data on these? Mid-year data on?
They will. Sure. Yes. All right. Yes, next slide.
So with the student pillar, we identified three bright stop, uh, spots. There are two bright spots that are data related. And one of them is data collection. And that means knowing what data to collect and what are the parameters or the protocols for collecting that data to ensure the validity of it.
So some of the work that has been done with that really is on the, um, student closer, in, um, student discipline. And so they really have worked hard to create more of a system to be able to do a better job of that year, that this year. And we've already been tweaking it as we've been going along, um, refreshing how some of the training, that kind of thing, ongoing. Um, the second one is about test data. And in those goals that you're seeing for the K1 Acadians and the, uh, grades 2, 8 map data, in three of those areas, we're seeing the growth that we expected that are going to help us meet our goals. And we feel like we're really on track there. One of those areas is not where we want it to be, so we have concerns and we're working on that. But again, in three of those areas, we are on track and we're expecting to be able to meet those goals. As far as that third one about root causes, a bright spot that's related to leading the short cycle action process, we've been digging deeper as we look for the root causes of the results of some of the things that we're getting. And some of it is daunting work and it seemed impossible in the past, but it's encouraging to know, well, we're not as good as we want to be yet. We are improving compared to where we have been in tackling some of those tough topics. Um, TLI is taking on definitely some challenges that, of things that we have not approached before. Um, it just doing it in different ways. And, you know, while we know what we're doing isn't perfect. And, you know, while we know what we're doing isn't perfect, we are making steps towards that. And so that's one thing that we really look at as being a bright spot.
If I'm jumping ahead, just let me know, but are you going to tell us like which area isn't where you want it to be? And which, and then I think the second part of kind of the new and different are the challenges in TLI. Are you gonna delve into those a little bit?
Absolutely. The part that is not where we want it to be right now is in ELA, the two through eight in our map scores. And looking at what those might indicate, that's something that isn't where we want it to be. And some of the things what we've been looking at for root causes is digging into. What we're seeing for the data by buildings and looking at some of the things. And and kind of why do we think it's looking like this? What are some things that are working in certain places? How can we spread that to other buildings, to other places? And what are some things that are areas of concern? And we're seeing some patterns that are indicating some ways that the TLI department can do a better job of support, providing more support. We're saying, hey, we noticed this area of concern. And I think that maybe we can come together and throw a little bit of our efforts to improve this. Because now we can see a place where that is at, a place where there's something that, you know, isn't what we want it to be.
And my question is is in reverse. So we see that the that, let's say, the attendance rate increased. Is not part of this report why that has happened or what you did? And then, so like we were serving chocolate milk and nobody came and we started serving strawberry milk. Now everybody's came. Everybody's coming. Is that not a part of what?
So. So again, what you're looking at is what we want to achieve. And I'll speak directly to the to the attendance piece and this might get more to some of our barriers. We have made in in our schools and our school improvement plans. Very, very direct efforts at improving attendance through certain incentives. It's gonna look different at every school. I can tell you the data at the end of January was eighty one point five percent, so we are flat. And and when I think of barriers, which is our next slide, the concern there is. It's February and and we haven't maybe, you know, would it be nice to be at eighty four percent? Because historically, your attendance is going to be more challenging. In March, April and May. So where is that gonna leave us at the end? I don't know, but I know we have several incentive programs go going on. In our schools. So that's, that's something we're learning a lot about right now. And and I think we'll be able to hopefully have a better commentary at at the end of the year on on some of those programs.
Okay, Dr. Strasser, I I think I need to back up because I'm. I don't mean to be lightheaded, but I I guess I don't understand what what type of report are you giving us? What are we supposed to know out of report? Are we not looking at numbers tonight or?
Specific, specific numbers, we're we're not giving a lot of hard, hard data. And and the reason that is, is because most of this is in is in transition. Meaning, so for for example, we we won't touch on our student survey data. Because that that isn't until March and we won't have that data till the end of March. So survey information, we're just in the middle of that, so I can't even give you a lot of that information. I can give you little things like attendance. Ms. Roberts maybe has a little bit on on some of her accadients in in that data. But it, again, you're you're kind of in the middle of of certain things. So I just caution, loo- looking at some of that that data at the moment. And what does that, what does it tell us and is it misleading? I guess is how we've been looking at it.
Okay, all right. So I I maybe in our next exec, we can talk about exactly what. This mid-year report is supposed to be next leadership. And maybe take out information, because I'm looking at information that I'm thinking that I'm supposed to be processing.
Okay.
And I'm now being informed, it's not there to be processed, right? So and why is it?
I I gave that to you so you you knew, because you should have that. That was what we started the year with. And that's was a reminder of our targets. So it's just a guiding document.
We'll visit in exit. All right, proceed.
Oh, I had my hand up. I I share your concerns. Like, I I kind of do want numbers. I know that it's. I know it's hard, it may not, maybe not totally accurate, but like when you tell me, well, attendance is flat. And actually, we're coming up on some really hard months, so we anticipate, what I'm hearing is we anticipate it's gonna go down. But I thought the point of a mid-year update was, and here's how we're pivoting, here's what we're doing differently. This is the data we have and here's what we need from you as a board to do better, or whatever, whatever the case is. I I'm, the reason I I, so I I share that. I I feel like I actually want to know what's happening and not be given like the bright spots. And the reason I actually raised my hand is. Can I, I, can I summarize that the bright spots in the student are that we're getting better at collecting data, which is important, right? That got us, that's gotten us dinged in the past that we don't have data. So that's a bright spot, but it's not gonna be measured in an outcome. We have some test data that's showing signs of growth. And that's three areas out of how many?
Four.
Three out of four. So the K twelve ELA, K twelve math, or K one two ELA, K one two math.
Yeah.
And then the upper two to eight ELA and math.
Yeah.
And then the root causes being a bright spot is that people are thinking about root causes and trying to address root causes.
Yeah, I think the roots causes a part of it is that we are improving on digging down to them and getting at some of that. And doing some of the parts at looking at just haven't happened before. So as we're digging into it and trying to find what is the root cause and how do we want to address it? And some of that hasn't even happened in the past. So that's part of why we're seeing that as a bright po- a bright spot.
And let me add a little bit on that, the behavior piece. Because of our work with the voluntary agreement in OCR. We had to shift some of our emphasis and and we're, we are collecting data much better on major, minor. Referrals and and that is information that when we bring bring forward. You know, it's gonna be different and it's gonna elicit some hard conversations. But we're taking a look at that data continually, so we can try to get ahead. But when you start. Collecting data and with fidelity, it'll change your numbers and your predictions. So that's something we have to be be aware of. And then, you know, another thing, when you look at the student pillar in particular. Just to point out, like, the ACT is one of our metrics. Well, the ACT is coming up in a month or.
March fifth.
So, yeah, you know, so that's the balance that we're walking here is is. How much, how much data giving you tonight is relevant for understanding. But also, you have great questions on it. I know you want to know some of that real tangible. Information and that's good and and you should keep asking those things as we go through and we can give as much as as we can.
So kind of building off of what Christine said, then, when you're looking at attendance, for example. Are there changes that you guys are talking about making as a result of the flat numbers at this point?
So, Ms. Urban, one of the areas that we are addressing with our rounding, rounding has become a part of our culture and ingrained in. Our conversations and our feedback loop with our principals and to their staff and then back to the principals and back to us. And so part of the rounding conversations is, how's your, your, your going? What can we do to support you? How can we help you be more successful? In the mid-year rounding, we have asked the principals to ask one question, add a question in with their rounding. So a fifth question to their staff member that aligns directly to their third goal. And each school improvement plan has an ELA goal, a math goal and a non-academic goal. And the non-academic goal, can you several different measures? Pro culture and climate attendance can be one of the measures. If we have statistically, if we have an improvement in culture and climate, we're gonna have better attendance. Statistically, if we have a warmer place and more welcoming, kiddos are gonna want to come be in the building. So what we've asked our principals to do is add this fifth question when they round with their teachers. Ask a question that aligns with their non-academic goal. So if their non-academic goal is to increase. Increase culture and climate in this elementary school by utilizing PBIS, okay? Then they could ask a fifth question that would say, how do you feel PBIS is working in your classroom with your student day in and day out? And what can we do as a principal or as a leadership team to help you be more successful? How does better look for PBIS in with you with your classroom? We can ask that of the PE teacher, of the lunchroom personnel, we can ask that of anybody. So then what we've done, part of that attendance is to really address that non-academic goal. Mid-year, seeing that we've flatlined in that capacity to want to increase and and beef up this last push. We also know that sickness and illnesses have run rampant in the schools the last couple of months, which has also had an impact on our attendance, to be truthful. It's not just the culture and the climate. It's, we've been sick, everyone has been. So that's had a huge impact also. But how can we really make our, our, each one of our buildings welcoming? And a a place of safety and belonging. And so that really is the the piece that we're, we're asking our principals to gain that information. So we can be supportive of our principals, so they can be more supportive of their teachers in creating that culture and climate. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Dr. Strasser, Bobby, can we go back to the slide of the calendar? Of that extending chart.
Slide two.
Stop. Okay, I I I can have an appreciation that this is the first time that we're doing this. And we're massaging what to do. So. I I think we're gonna have to do just a little bit more massaging on what the board. Information that the board wants and how that can be presented to us in a way that. At least I can understand. Maybe I'm the only board member that's that's confused. But when I hear I'm getting a report, I'm assuming that it's a progress report on work that's being done. So this is the mid-year progress of where we are on these standards. So that's what I was expecting and it's, it's not in my mind happening that way. So it it's just gonna either take some understanding on my part on what you're giving to us in this. Mid-year report and or and reverse what we're expecting during that report.
Yeah, and 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 that's fair. When we went into this, each each pillar group worked with Casey. She gave us some parameters with which to approach this and and that's how we set out to put this together.
Okay.
So we can always adjust accordingly and and I think that's part of the learning process. How do we communicate out what you need in order to understand?
Correct.
As a board, better.
Thank you and my and my apologies for.
That's fine.
Thank you, Bobby.
So two barriers and challenges to our improvement process. One, of course, is our staffing and staffing is not just a rapid city area schools issue, it's a nationwide issue. Staffing is an issue not only in education, but in all industries across the nation and across the world right now. For various reasons, we have staff that are quitting. In fact, we had a staff member at one of our elementary schools resign effective today, effective immediately. So we have our staff members leaving for different and various reasons. We find that many of them are leaving for mental health reasons. We have, we find that many are leaving because they have extra workload at home. We find that some are leaving because they find a different position someplace else that's better. What we're finding is keeping our staff and maintaining our staff, really, it comes into, we look at two different sides of the coin. One is re-recruiting our good staff members every single year so that we keep our high performers. And our high performers continue to lead and help lead in their school and be that model for excellence, not only for the rest of their staff. But also for our students and for our our community as well. So part of the staffing is re-recruiting our our high performers and then recruiting and retaining those that we want to grow as well. Into that category. And if we continue to grow the the curb into that high performing and be the the school of choice, the district of choice. Not only for Western South Dakota, but for Eastern Wyoming, will continue to attract more of that same kind. And so not only when we're looking at staffing, are we looking at upscaling our leadership, we're also looking at upscaling our staffing as well. Instead of just out with old, but really trying to put the resources in the hands of our our teachers to help them be the best that they can be. And how that looks so that they they stay with rapid city area schools and we have that longevity. Instead of being understaffed in every department, in every building, in every district across the nation. So we're looking at how that looks, not only in in the student pillar. Mr. Manuel also talked about that in in the staff pillar. But that is a concern that is is that's discussed in all of our pillars. How do we retain and how do we recruit and how does that look so we we don't burn out in February? But we really maintain our passion for what we're doing and and delivering the best education we can to our students.
The second one that we have here that really is a barrier, a challenge to improvement in the student pillar is. We were aware last year that we had some concerns about reading. And because of that, we already had set up AIM training for all of our elementary teachers. Our middle school and high school teachers about the science of reading. And so kind of a challenge or a barrier right now is we're in that tough place in the middle of a big initiative. When it will take time before we know if our investment of time and resources will increase student learning or not. And so it makes it kind of challenging to stay the course and not get distracted by other promising opportunities. We've made a decision, we're working through it, we're, you know, continue to work on these classes. We're all taking them. I took the class myself. It is very challenging. There's a lot to learn in it. But, you know, a part of it is just trying to stay the course and knowing that it's gonna take time before we can see what that looks like. And that's always, that's always tough.
So what is the response from the educators with AIM? I mean, are they excited about it, open to it? I know, and Kit could speak to this, that when at Douglas, when they brought in letters training, there was a lot of opposition. And but some of our most seasoned educators, after being open to it and seeing what it was doing in their classroom, switched on a dime. And we saw scores just completely flip. So are they, are educators open to it and and what does that look like?
I would say that the majority of educators are open to it. There certainly are some that are not enjoying the experience. And, you know, we're here kind of a gamut, but of having about four hundred and fifty people, I would say, that are currently taking the course. And for us to be monitoring and managing that is a lot of manpower on our end. But we are, the majority, I would say, are really noticing good things. And for example, I went to a training at the middle school a couple of months ago. There were a couple of people that had comments that, you know, the kind of, they were saying, it's not you because this decision was made before you came. And I said, you know, I appreciate that, but knowing a lot of really smart people looked very hard at this. That I agree with this decision and I believe I would have made the exact same decision and talked about a few things. And there were people that responded and said. And there were people that responded and said, you know, the couple of people that had concerns about it were not speaking for all of us and that, you know, I'm learning a lot, I really appreciate it. We have had staff members who had, who took it in previous years too, that are, they're kind of expanding a little bit from there, who said, I have a master's of science in reading and I want my money back. Because what I'm learning in here is completely different from what I learned when I got that master's and I feel like I'm gonna be able to do a much better job, so. What's that?
The science of reading and AIM aren't the same thing?
They are not the same thing, no.
Wait, they got a master's in the science of reading or the master's in?
A master's of science and reading, it's the master's degree.
Sure, yeah.
It's a master's of science. Yeah, it's, it's what the degree is called. So maybe they got that degree from Black Hill State University, maybe they got it from Nebraska, maybe they got it somewhere else. But they're saying, which I know the universities are changing their practices as well, so please don't take this as I'm knocking anything on a university. But teacher said, you know, I earned that ten years ago and I, I want my money back. I feel like I'm learning so much more through AIM and learning more about reading and how to do a better job. And so I'm glad that I'm learning this.
So I know we've, oh, I'm sorry. So I know we've had several teachers who jumped on this bandwagon a few years ago, got training, have been kind of advocating for it amongst their colleagues. Are there, is there any way that you could gather data from the, kind of the, the trailblazers in the district on what's actually happened in their classroom? Like, not anonymized, I'm not saying, you know, but just to like share that when you switch from, I don't remember what it's called, levels-based reading or whatever, and you switch to the science of reading, this is what happens.
It actually was about the three Q-ing system, it's not about levels at all. So just, there's some things like.
Guided literacy, balanced literacy. When you switch from balanced literacy to science of reading, this is what, sorry. This is what happens.
We would have to look at that and a part of it is that it would be taking the data from individual teachers' classrooms and kind of comparing that. And then some of the people that were the probably trailblazers on that are not classroom teachers. Some of them are literacy specialists and that see small groups of students. And so I don't know that in that way we'd be able to get clear evidence on that.
Well, the other, the other part of this too is we, the curriculum that our teachers are using supports balanced literacy, which is why we're looking at curriculum adoption at the same time of taking AIM pathway training, so that we choose curriculum that aligns to the science of reading instead of balanced literacy. So it's having, not only switching the paradigm, but switching the resources to, to really create that, that common viability in that curriculum.
Yeah, that sounds super complex.
We've got three committees going right now. In fact, one of them was meeting tonight, the high school level, but looking at refreshing the resources that they use, their primary resources in their classrooms. And we'll be doing pilot studies of at least probably two next school year to see which one best meets their needs and then adopting those. And it's quite a process, but we have started that this year.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
On three of the next actions for the student pillar, one of the things that we're looking at as far as the root causes of test scores, we uncovered kind of a basic challenge with guaranteed and viable curriculum. And an example would be because that's so complex that even the TLI team members had some different understanding of it. So we've been doing a lot of work as a professional learning community to talk about what exactly does this mean? What does it look like? And really solidifying our understanding to make sure that we are communicating out effectively when we're working with those groups of teachers. So just knowing that even in our staff, like we thought, what is guaranteed and viable curriculum? We would talk about it, we would refer to it. I know we talked about it with groups of teachers. But when it got right down to it, we didn't have the exact same picture. We didn't have the exact same understanding of it. And it, it's complicated and it takes a lot of time. And we've put hours into it already, but realizing that there is an impact on that. And when we're asking teachers to implement guaranteed and viable curriculum, what are we talking about? What are the pieces where there really isn't any wiggle room? And what are the pieces where there's flexibility and they're able to make more choices? And that's part of the art and science of teaching and we want them to have some room for those because they are experts in a lot of things, they have a lot of great experiences. But there are some things that we really need to hold too so that we make sure that we are consistent, especially when we're talking between fourteen elementary buildings, five middle schools and two point five with the alternative school, high schools, and that it's really important that we have that consistency because students shouldn't be relying on just kind of a lottery of what they get. That really isn't fair. And so we're really trying to dig down into some of that. And so that's one of the actions that we have already started. And we are continuing as we like use it, like fleshing out exactly what we have, that we have it in writing, that we make sure we're very consistent in that. And then as we're doing that committee work and we're working with groups of teachers as they work on their pacing guides and that, you know, we have those pieces laid out as consistently as we can so that we're really implementing it to the best of our ability. So just some of the things that we're already working on.
Can I ask a question follow up?
Yes.
This is the first I've heard of guaranteed and viable curriculum. Can you, is this a concept that's been introduced to the district this year?
No, it's been around.
Give a higher level view of what it is?
It's a, it's been around for a long time. And guaranteed is what are we guaranteeing that every student is getting? And viable is, is it possible for this to happen? So it is viable to say that we can guarantee that this can happen in a school year. And so those two pieces together to make sure that it's happening as, like in every second grade classroom, that this is what's guaranteed and viable for second grade math.
So a root cause of test scores not not improving is that we don't have a GVC?
Well, we have the pacing guide and the pacing guide has a lot of those pieces, but we are very aware in self-reported by different buildings. And then also we hear all these things, this, this classroom isn't doing it, this classroom decided to drop three units, that kind of thing. And we really take it very seriously. It's a lot of people who really care about, for example, elementary math, the elementary math leaders that continue to come together. And they've carefully thought out, these units build to this. And if they're taught out of order, then there's some fundamental pieces, some foundational pieces that the student doesn't have when it's building to the next unit. So that causes concern. But when we're trying to explain guaranteed and viable curriculum is important, we must stand by these pieces. But we also have a little room for some of this, for the art and science of teaching, for individual teachers, for teachers to flex a little bit to meet the needs of the students that they have in their room. Because my group of students is different from yours, so we can't do the exact same thing and still meet their needs. So we're trying to figure out what do, could we have to absolutely hold to? So we make sure that we're not dropping three units that are very important, but also that we're allowing for a little bit of wiggle room because that's important. So we're really getting at, how can we describe that? How can we get at, what does it look like, look like, why is it important? And then also teachers that are saying, we'd like to make sure that our administrator is really informed on what they need to look through, look for when they're in the classroom so that if a teacher isn't following it, they know.
The other part of this too is, is we have some of our students who, who move from school to school. So if they move from school A to school B and then there's a gap in the guaranteed and viable curriculum, we have a student that moves, now they're missing two months of, of school on concepts that compound. And so that's where we wanna ensure that everybody doesn't have to be on the same page every single day, but that we don't have gaps if we have students that move from school to school. So that's the other part of that root cause in that test score is that when kiddos aren't falling through the cracks.
Okay, so the, the, the root cause of the test scores is that schools aren't doing the same thing?
Yes.
Middle school, sixth grade math is not the same at each school?
It's, it's looking different enough that we have some gaps. And so everybody's not way off base, but it's different enough where it's causing gaps in learning and some deficiencies that we want to tighten up and evaluate to ensure that we're, we are on a close enough ship where our kiddos don't fall through the cracks if they move from school A to school B.
And so your action step is just continuing the conversation?
And part of that is with our curriculum, looking at our curriculum adoption too from moving forward to make sure that we are, we're not using antiquated paradigms, but we're really moving in the direction of the science of reading and progressive instructional and learning tools and opportunities.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Burquen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I appreciate you doing that. When I was in high school at Central, we would be a unit or two behind Stevens. And so as a teacher at Central, even by that time, they had already started working on that process and it was a lot closer. And then by the time I, I don't know where they are now, you know, better than I know, by the time I loved teaching at Central, we were, we were pretty on pace. So then they were getting that same thing across the district. And I, I know that was not happening when I was a student. And I also know that that's an ongoing process that, that even in my six years at Central, from the beginning to the end, we, we made a lot of progress, but we weren't done. And so I, I, I very much appreciate that as, as a goal.
And I would just add, it does matter for outcomes as seen on test scores so that our students are in the place we hope they are prior to taking an ACT or an S back. And, and that can help us, again, move towards more student achievement as seen on those test scores.
And then our final, oh, wait, okay. And then our final on number two with our action plan, I alluded to the rounding conversations a little bit earlier. Another piece of the rounding conversations is the, the principals are, are quantifying or bringing their qualitative data from the rounding conversations to DDL and to the table and having conversations around, here's what we hear as a theme in each one of our buildings, areas of success, areas of struggle, so that we as a leadership team are able to remove barriers for the principals and for the staff at, in their buildings to help them be more successful. We know according to research, stability in a classroom with a teacher is the number one predictor for success. And the number two predictor is stability is the leadership. Really trying to provide that stability and support to the classroom and to the leaders in that rounding conversations and bring value to that so the teachers feel heard. Here's what we need in our building. We hear you, we wanna meet your needs, we wanna provide those resources. Are they hard resources? Are they, are they, are they literature? Is it crackers so everyone is fed? What is the resource that you need at your building to be successful? We hear you, we want to remove those barriers. And so we're using the rounded rounding conversations in a quantitative measure and a qualitative measure really to bring that, bring that power back to the classroom so the teachers feel supported.
We're gonna move over to the communication pillar. Shane and Bobby are gonna join us here at the table. And what you will see on on this pillar, again, RCS communicating clearly, consistently with all staff, families, students and the community, that's the ultimate goal there. We do have specific results for you on this one because the data's done. And you could see where we, where we scored in terms of accessibility and accuracy. And I, I believe I had alluded to some of this probably in December at one of the board meetings and talking about the DSS results. That was more about accessibility and timeliness because those were the two that we really wanted to address. And that's something our DDL team has, has really worked on. But coming into the year, accessibility and accuracy were the two, the two main ones. And you can see where your leaders scored this year based on, again, that's our direct reports, are mostly principals, managers responding to us. So anyway.
All right, good evening, board. So far, two bright spots for outcomes related to our short cycle action plan. We wanted to touch on the district services survey, which as Cory said, we do have some data back on that and the rounding improvement that we've made. So you may have noticed our scores did drop a little bit. But I think some appreciation needs to be said for Dr. Strasser. In spring of 2023, when we first got these survey results back, we met with managers and principals to try and gain some feedback as a DDL team on what we needed to improve on. And it was actually combined with managers and principals receiving their survey scores from the employee experience survey. So it was a little bit distracted and I don't think DDL quite got the feedback that we needed to to actually find those actionable items to improve those scores. So again, appreciation for Dr. Strasser for this year really focusing in on that rounding and having Luis Guceria, Leah Oxner and Katie Farmer from the TLI team come in and lead us through those conversations. So we've really been able to drill down and see and have, create better action items to improve those two scores on our scorecard. And then the other bright spot that I just love so much is we launched Thrill Share, which is part of the website revamp, it's the new communications platform. So we actually launched that on February third, which if you recall, that was actually a two-hour late start day as well. So it was quite the morning trying to figure out how to send my first message out on Thrill Share. But the bright spot of all of that is, from what I can see from my communications part for the district, is there was way better feedback when we made that decision. Typically, when I post on Facebook or send the message out to families, I get some negative comments back with some frustrations, which is totally understandable. But the Facebook post had zero negative comments, which was quite outstanding. So I just think that we are able to reach a lot more people in a more efficient way with that new communications platform. And then the other bright spot related to leading the short cycle action plan process is that we are still on track to launch the new website and app in mid-April. Shane and I are meeting bi-weekly still with Aptige, working with them, getting them the documents they needed, going over new web pages and redesigning kind of everything with them. So that's pretty exciting, we're still right on to be, be able to launch that over spring break.
Some barriers that we had to work on our communication. One, one of the things that came out of the rounding was just not, not sure, schools weren't sure what to talk to when they needed help for something. So we decided to come up with one place to put all the contacts for basically the people that roll up to the, everyone in this room for, for, for schools and people that need help with something. So the, the struggles, that took a lot longer than we thought it was going to just because of the nature of the organization and all the different departments. But that is done and that's out on our employee portal, so yay for that. And then the second piece of that is just getting the awareness out there for staff to know where that's at and, and to use that. And that's a challenge in any organization, trying to share communication and you can share it over and over. And then people still like, well, you didn't tell me or I didn't see that. But so that's, we're being, trying to be very purposeful about that. So when someone calls, like for, for our, my, our group's a little bit easier because we have a help number, but we're just trying to, hey, so and then in the future, if you need help, you can go to this place and, and get your information. So those were, that was one of the barriers. And then the other piece we talked about was just consistency in our, our daily practices and how we communicate with each other and some norms for email, keeping your calendar updated. If you're trying to schedule a meeting, it's, if everyone keeps their calendar up to date, it's very easy to schedule a meeting out. And I'm talking more about people, the support side, because we don't expect principals or teachers to update their calendar for when they're open. But like for people, for those of us in this building and others, we should be able, if a school needs to set a meeting with us up, they should be able to go set something up. So that piece and then also email and how we use email and responding within a short period of time, identifying if something is important so we know to respond quicker. Maybe not sending a reply to all for something that could just be to the person that sent it, that kind of stuff. So, so those are the, the things that we're really focused on.
And then for our one next action on how we will adjust our action plans and process, Shane and I are gonna start digging in with schools and looking at the. Shane and I are going to start digging in with schools and looking at the communication platforms they're currently using with, from parents to teachers and then schools to families as well. We are aware that there are many different things in the district being utilized and we would, there's definitely a discrepancy between elementary communication and secondary communication. So we're going to dive into that and see where we land and then seeing if we can also find possibly a cohesive platform. So that way it is consistent throughout the academic career of a student. So we're not having to re-download apps or figure out what app the teacher is using and all of that. So that's going to be our next step.
And, and, um, excuse me, that would, that would speak to conversations I've had with some board members regarding our communication platforms. So, yes.
And, and I guess I'm making an assumption that right now buildings are autonomous on their communication choice or platform?
That would be correct.
And then there are probably going to be some suggestions made on the platforms that they should be using so that everybody is together? I mean, at, at some point, everybody's going to have to use similar things. And so people that are not using the things that are chosen are going to be, am I going to get some more hate mail about using whatever platform is chosen, I'm assuming?
Ye- yes.
Okay.
To, to be very straightforward, any, anytime you change what people are using, yeah, you're going to get that pushback. And, and that's okay. But I, I think we're taking a very thoughtful approach to trying to break down those communication missteps and, and, and this is the pillar that probably frustrates people more than anything because when you don't feel like you're being communicated well with, then it, frustration and angst sets in. So we do need to be much better across the district and it, to put some context to it, you know, elementaries, that's, that's one thing they, they use, you know, a few, a few platforms. But when you start talking about all your social media opportunities and, and then sometimes people just create, create their own and, and when you start using the RCAS logo and start acting like you're part of the school, but you created it on your own, that causes problems.
Correct.
And, and we can't have that. But that, that is something that takes a lot of time to rein in and, and organize and train people differently. So, yeah, the, the investigation is going to bring to light many, many things that are out of line with quality practice for communication.
Right. Mrs. Clapham?
Um, I just wanted to say, and kind of I, I really should have said this too in the student pillar. I think one of the things and when, even back when I was campaigning, that was said to me was it feels like buildings kind of function as silos. Like that we have this one does this, this one does that. And just hearing, talking about trying to align better the GVCs for curriculum and with communication platforms, I just want to say to everybody, I appreciate them. I know it's a, it's a bear, it's a juggernaut to try to do that for the number of buildings we have and I get it. But I think shooting for unity in the district and consistency is huge. And I'm just really appreciate, appreciative of that work. And I know, like I said, I know it's complicated and hard work, but I appreciate it.
Ms. Stephenson, thank you.
Um, yeah, I second what Jamie said. I, first of all, I just wanted to make a note publicly that I have not had to open as many PDFs on my phone via four steps to read a flyer from a school. So I'm super appreciative of that. I don't know if it's just because my daughter changed school or if there are fewer PDFs going out. I, I mean, I'm, I love everything that we're doing in our communication department, a new app, new website. I feel so strongly that things need to be uniform across this district for communication that I'm almost willing to put in a policy. Like once we know that Aptige works, I think it's not I, I think it's appropriate at the board level to say that the district will use a single method of communication or that all schools in the district will use the same level of communication because it is really harmful. And I gave an example to Dr. Strasser about not being on one program that one of the schools in the district was using and realizing after the fact that I missed things because this teacher was communicating in a different way. And it wasn't a bad way. It wasn't that that teacher was a poor communicator at all. It was just she wasn't using the same method as the other staff in the school. And so I missed out on things. And I, so I, I really hope that Aptige and every, that what we're using can be uniform throughout the district.
Thank you. Ms. Urban?
I did just want to say that I don't remember getting progress reports on Skyward in the past, at least like not uniformly. And I get them at the high school level for all of my kids now. And I don't know where that came from, but I like it. So I appreciate that. And I think when you're talking about communication tools, it really depends on like what you're sharing. Because there's the information that we want parents to know, like wear this color on Friday. And then there's content that we want to get out there to rally support for our schools. And I think I've talked to you about this before, Bobby, but you know, having someone in every building that is designated as kind of their communicator. So and maybe paying them a stipend and they're managing their website and they're managing their social media. And I know that that's a lot to ask, which is why I think they should be compensated. But then there's like a minimum number of posts. And so it looks more uniform and I don't know. Yes. And I think that's all I wanted to say.
All right.
And to your point about people designated, typically there are people and, and that comes directed by the superintendent, or excuse me, by the principal. Because what I have said to them, you know, it has been you need to know who is, is operating and you need to be able to tell me who's operating your, your website and your social media. So that they have direct monitoring of that. Because if something comes from your school, it's, it's coming back to you as, as the building leader. So we have had some of those conversations and, and definitely can keep advancing that.
And when, I was just going to say, I agree with Christine. I think putting it in policy is a really good idea.
Any more questions? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For our community pillar, we're going to add Bobby Joe Donovan to the table. So I will let Bobby and Bobby Joe, I don't have a.
He does call us the Bobby squared group, so.
JK JK.
All right. So for the community pillar, two of the bright spots that we have is we've really worked hard. We've kind of realized that the community pillar is going to need to evolve. We kind of decided on some metrics and we're not quite sure about them as of right now. Part of that being with introducing Thrill Share and new platforms. But one of the bright spots is that we gained some feedback about the parent caregiver surveys from our principals. And we have aligned that to meet the needs of elementary school conferences. So elementary school principals and teachers will have the unique opportunity to engage parents and ask them to take the survey when conferences are happening. We've created lots of QR code flyers. They're going to have computers out. We're hoping that that will help engage the parents while they're at the school focused on their student's education. And they'll be able to take that survey and we'll get more clear results for our principals to have better feedback and know where they're, they need to improve.
So the other piece that is part of the community pillar as a bright spot is the volunteer process. So if anybody has ever gone through the volunteer process, sometimes it can be tedious, but I would say that is definitely evolved and improved over the years. And we have a pretty good process in place now for any parents or community members that want to come in and volunteer with our schools. And it really does give us a pretty good number of volunteers within our buildings. And so at any given time, we can pull up a particular building and be able to tell, give a list and of, of those people that are in that building volunteering at some point or have been approved to volunteer. So definitely nice to have that.
Can I ask just a quick clarifying question? Are you saying you know how many people are volunteering in a building or how many people have been approved to volunteer?
Approved to volunteer.
So we don't track volunteer hours?
We do not. There is a place on our website that at one time you could go in and track your own volunteer hours if a volunteer wants to, but that is not something that is turned into us. No.
And part of, part of that too is Bobby Joe and Rebecca Hagan have really been diving into the opportunities to expand on the current features we are using so that there, that way there would be an accountability factor of tracking those hours. So we, maybe that metric, we could foresee that changing as well.
I'll talk about that.
Oh.
It's going to later slide. That's fine. It's all good.
And then, yeah, one bright spot relating to our leading, or leading the short cycle action plan process is just the evolution of this pillar. We really have started to dive in and with meeting with Casey and Corey, we're looking at it and we are just kind of seeing that these metrics are not necessarily something that is the correct metric to be creating action steps towards that are going to make a difference within our district. So if we go back, you'll see like for the 23, 24 social media followers and then open rate for school messenger, those are pretty specific. And like I said, we have switched over to Thrill Share, so that metric is going to be changing. And then bright spot of Thrill Share, people can block us. They can block our text messages, but not our phone calls and emails. So having that, that open rate should be a lot better. And they actually have a different target metric to track that. So, yeah, just the evolution that this pillar will be changing and for upcoming reports out to you guys.
Okay, I had a, oh, Ms. Stephenson. Ms. Urban?
Lost my thought again. Other than, I know this might be a stretch. I need to start writing things down. This might be a stretch, but I almost feel like a metric in the community pillar could be enrollment. And when we think about like, how are we reaching the community and are we being responsive? I know it's a leap, but I just don't see it in here. And I, and I feel like it's a, it should be somewhere, reflected somewhere. What was on the slide before? Did you go back? One more. And no, that investigate one. Oh, I know what I was going to say. Okay. I am a, I've been a volunteer and I think I've only one time received an email. So I'm just wondering like, how are we telling volunteers that there are opportunities? Because.
So that's a little bit of what I was, yes, what I planned to talk about, about how we're evolving in this, one of the, our next steps.
I, I had a question. I don't know. It seems to make sense in my mind right now, but we'll, once I get it out into the atmosphere, we'll see if it makes sense. Obviously, the board has a community outreach committee, which speaks directly to this pillar. So I don't know if it, is it collaboration? Do you guys get together to be on the same page about plans and strategies and seems to make sense to me?
As of right now, we don't, but that will actually come out in the next slide for how we're going to evolve the board's part, are part of this pillar. So.
Okay.
I, I do tend to think as a member of the community outreach, I, I do think that, that our committee is a board reaching out to community. Like this is a community that the district's role in the community and communication with the community and getting community involved. And I feel like our board outreach committee, a community outreach committee is more, how can we reach out to?
So you feel it's different?
I feel like it's different. I feel like I wouldn't want to go as an outreach committee member and I guess I, you know, talk about how to improve the parent caregiver survey. I feel like that's overreached. Like I, I want the survey results to improve, but I don't want to sit with you guys and talk about how to do it. Because I just don't know that I, I'm not the expert in it.
Okay. And I, yeah, well, I just, from a strategic planning standpoint, it's I see how it's different. But from a strategic plan, we're all wanting to engage the community. So I don't know. Maybe not. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. I would really like to second what Katie said. I think we need an enrollment goal under one of these pillars. I think if you don't state the goal, then you don't pay as close attention to it. And we know that it would help our district if we held on to our kids.
And it would help our community. All right. So even though the evolving of this scorecard is a bright spot, it's also one of the barriers. So for the, we're just really trying to hone in right now on how we can better the metrics. We don't feel like when Bobby Joe and I sit down, we're like, why did we even write this metric down in the first place? Like what are some goals behind it that are obtainable? That we can do those short cycle, but also meet the needs of the district? So that's just been a barrier, like trying to figure out where this is going to be moving. And then as I spoke to earlier, the board of education metrics. So on that slide, we had the board member participation in school and community events listed as one of the trackable metrics. And we just feel that the revamp of that specifically is necessary. All of, not all of those listed that we were counting were community outreach events, right? It may have been like going to a school and like reading a book or something like that, but maybe not exactly what we had in mind. And then it was kind of sometimes hard to decipher on the blue sheets what exactly you guys were doing, right? Because you put in the title down and we didn't know exactly what you were doing while you were in the building or out in the community. So we plan on revisiting that and hopefully reaching out to the community outreach committee to kind of put that in their lap as that is like the perfect correlation between strategic planning and that committee. Yeah. Did you have any, anything yet?
And then I think one of the things for our next, the next steps is really looking into that.
Oh, sorry. I thought I pushed it. Obviously not hard enough. Is looking into the, the volunteer program because of those reasons that, that was just mentioned, Katie. So being able to, how do we share out those opportunities of where there's, there's volunteers needed? Right now, our volunteer numbers, our volunteers, for example, with, with Valentine's Day coming up, they might be having a Valentine's party. And so a parent signs up, they're considered in that volunteer count. And I just don't, we don't feel it is an accurate number because it might be a one and done. So one of the things I've, I've talked with Corey and Dr. Strasser and Bobby about is if it's more, if the, the, this piece of it is more than volunteers, but community engagement. Because there are so many things that we have partners coming into our buildings to do, whether it is actually volunteering in a classroom to come in and read books, whether it is coming in to be a guest speaker, those people don't necessarily go through the volunteer process all the time. Because they are, they're not considered a volunteer. They're just coming to talk about their, their place of work or their business or their career options. So really trying to, and kind of what Bobby said, how we're going to evolve that community pillar. The hope is, is to get a better understanding of the community involvement. Volunteers obviously being a very important part of that. So one of the things that Becky Hagan, our volunteer coordinator currently is doing is she, she has looked at the current platform that we're using, along with an additional platform, a, a different platform, to how we can better share out the needs of different buildings for those situations. Because right now it's just an email that goes out. And I know we all get an email. Not fun, right? Getting all these emails. And so, you know, that volunteer coach that's helping out with a soccer team, do they really want to hear about the volunteer opportunities? You know what I mean? It's, there's not really an opt-in, opt-out situation. And so I think we have the means to, to do more of that with a different platform or to expand our current platform a little bit more. So looking at, yes, more trackable metrics within our volunteers and expanding that a little bit more within our community is one of our next steps.
Uh, Mrs. Urban?
I don't even know if I get the emails and I'm on the list. So I. I, yeah, um, that would be nice even to get an email. And I think the community engagement piece is so important. I think just creating goodwill and making people feel like schools are part of a community, whether it's like you said, an expert coming in and speaking to a class on a, you know, various topics. Um, or having seniors bust from a senior home to come read to kids. They need to feel connected to our schools. And so the more we can get them in, I think the better.
So I would just say that, it was mentioned about buildings being kind of siloed. This is another area where the principal at Pinedale knows their school needs and they don't necessarily know to reach out to the district and we can, so those, those are some of that commu- so that comes back to the communication pillar a little bit too, that we're working to expand our communication to make sure buildings know that if they have a need, we have a database. And so that has been shared out, there's a building contact at each of our buildings. And so that's something Becky has done a, a very good job of since she's come on in the last year and a half to make sure that she is having that contact. We just don't hear. It's very rare she gets communication from a building saying, hey, I need help on this or I need help on that. Um, so that is something, hopefully, when we have a little bit more succinct processing with that, we can help with that.
Mr. Urban? Yeah, um, this is more of an idea and I don't even know if it's worth it, but as you're talking about the trackable metrics, uh, one thing that I was kind of wondering was with the volunteers, how many are someone who is a parent or a caregiver? Or a coed or something like that? And how many are just volunteers? Um, and I don't know if that's something we can maybe add to like the signup form pretty easily, but thinking of community outreach, obviously, parents and caregivers are a part of the community. But are we, is that, is that all of our volunteers or like, are there people volunteering that are not? Like how, how far out of our school, school are we, are we reaching? And like I said, I don't know if that's worth it, but just a thought ahead.
The way our current system is set up, it would be pretty time consuming initially to go and figure that out. But that is definitely something we could consider, like you said, with the application moving forward.
Right, Ms. Stephenson?
It does, I feel like I'm echoing Katie tonight quite a bit, but um, it is a little heartbreaking when someone comes up to me and says, I tried, I'm a community member. I tried to volunteer at the district, I filled out all the stuff and I never heard a word. Like I, they don't, they didn't have a connection. The only time I volunteered at schools is when I've sought out a connection, you know, or, or someone has sought me out. But like, we have a, a huge community that supports our schools and they would like to help. But if nobody asked them specifically, they go, they even do the background check. I, my mother-in-law is a retired teacher, she should be of a general beetle, but nobody's asked her, nobody, she should be, it, it, it's just a little, it's a little frustrating and it sounds like what we need to do is it, is create more opportunities and then communicate those opportunities. We have, the number of volunteers doesn't mean anything if we aren't giving them the opportunity to do it, to actually get into schools. And the value of that is, it's just immense, um.
I know one of the things we talked about was the new platform and being able to, for a principal to log in and be able to say, we're looking for somebody to come read to our third graders or whatever the case might be. Um, and have it be more open and available and then they can see the need and be able to fill those.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I'll just add, uh, I, I agree with, with what we're saying and, and what I've heard uh here. Uh, but there is some caution from, from a teaching standpoint and, and a building uh leadership standpoint of um, when do they need things? And then how much time and effort does it take to, to bring people in? And, and get them a part of what needs to be done? So our staff works on limited time, uh, even though we might have really awesome resources. Sometimes it, it, that weighs more um versus bringing people in. And, and sometimes teachers just like to do things their way that time. And, and there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, but I definitely uh agree uh with, with the comments tonight. And I think there are, are things that we can do to really um improve our, our volunteer programming.
Is there a volunteer coordinator, manager, person? Okay, and, all right, and is that not in any type of job description to reach out to volunteers or?
When she has, when, when somebody has reached out and asked for a volunteer, um, like for volunteers, she does reach out to those people that have signed up. So when you sign up to be a volunteer, there's, you can choose the buildings you want to be a part of. Um, so for example, we were looking for junior achievement um volunteers. And so those people that had an interest to go into second or fourth grade classrooms, it did go out. You know, to say, we're looking for volunteers for this situation. Um, and so again, we want to be mindful to make sure that it's not just another email, but rather it's going to the people that are intended for that. And so yes, there has been communication that have gone out. Um, but again, it's, it's, goes both ways. We have to have the need come to, to Becky in order for her to reach out and say. Um, and the other thing is, is that if, if somebody volunteers, if you come in and say, I, you know, I really want to help and here are the schools I'd really like to help at, she does reach out to those volunteer coordinators at the building level and s- and let them know, we have somebody who wants to come help here, you know, they're on your list, be sure to reach out to them.
Well, I think that's something good to say, that there is contact, they, they just don't sign up and don't hear from the district at all, but several volunteers are being contacted for needs. All right, anything else? Nope. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. Uh, so bringing it home tonight, uh, we have our, our staff, staff pillar. Uh, Ms. Mr. Manuel is uh going to share some information with us. Uh, during, during the year, we did add in uh Nicole Keegan, our staff development manager uh to uh work, work with Mr. Manuel, yeah, specifically on this pillar. She has a lot to do with uh, when you, when you talk about retention, uh, which, which is a, a big deal of for us. But um, you know, and, and then the endorsements in, in some of those things, so. Yeah. Mr. Manuel.
Thank you, good evening, board.
Good evening.
So first couple of bright spots of outcomes related to the short action plan regarding the, the staffing pillar this evening. I would like to talk about first is uh the improvement of the effective applicant process. I think we had spoken previously in a meeting about some of the challenges we were having with our application process. In particular, some people being able to submit an application on a personal device such as their cell phone, iPad or what have you. Uh, that led us to look at another vendor called Helios, uh, whose platform we were using for onboarding and they had an applicant tracking system as well. So we explored that, but what we discovered is through Skyward and app, uh applicant tracking that we have, uh, we are able to submit applications through personal devices. Uh, it is just a matter of understanding the process that when you get to the bottom of the application after you've completed it, that you literally have to swipe left to get to the far right corner of the application to hit the submit button. So as, as simple as that sounds, that was something that, that we were missing. Uh, and so now being able to communicate that with applicants, uh, that is something that has opened up the door for us to now start seeing more applicants come in that are completed versus incomplete because they filled everything out, but just weren't able to hit the, the submit button. Um, another item that we had utilized was, uh, I would refer to it as the quick app where we went out onto the website where we asked essentially for individual's name, cell phone number, position they were interested in for various support positions. We saw a lot of success with that. That really expedited the process in getting applicants in, interviewed and then selected to fill the position. So uh, that was really a big bright spot uh, uh in, in the still staffing pillar. Second one, uh, leadership retention, and I think Bobby referred to it previously this evening with the staff experience survey results uh for DDL. Uh, and learning that uh importance of accessibility, timeliness with staff, uh, we needed to improve in that. And uh, what we learned, I think, through that was that we needed to do a better job in getting back with uh individuals. But how that also benefits are the managers that report to us. Uh, it's our job to also make them successful. And so uh by taking that information through that survey and uh really honing in on what it was that we needed to improve upon, really uh I think helps us, help our managers succeed as well. Uh, a bright spot related to the leading short psycho action process is that I have uh progress with room for improvement. Uh, we have made some progress in some of the areas. Uh, and also I believe that was mentioned a little bit earlier, are we measuring the correct things? Um, when we started this whole entire process in the very first meeting with Casey, one of the uh comments that was made is just because you can measure it, doesn't mean that it's something that you have to put your time to. And I think what we're realizing is there are some other things that maybe we should be looking at a closer look at to measure. For example, um, the number of openings uh year-to-date this year compared to last year in various areas. Uh, I can tell you, for example, with the paraeducators, the number of current openings right now are much lower than they were at this time last year as well. What can we attribute that to? Well, we can at least maybe say one was compensation through the negotiations uh increased there. Uh, I would also like to hope that it was part of the application process that allowed people to get through the application. Uh, because again, one of the things we'd also talked about with the application was that it was cumbersome. And we discovered again through looking at Helios, that they had a application process that allowed you to tailor make each position uh their own particular application. What we discovered with uh Skyward is we do have the ability to do that as well. It's just a little bit different than the way Helios looks and works. Uh, but essentially you dictate and determine what parts of the application are considered required versus non-required. That way people aren't wasting time in completing areas on the application uh that they don't need to for sp- particular positions. A couple of barriers, challenges uh to improvement in staffing. Uh, first one we came to was there's not going to be one particular solution. Uh, as somebody mentioned earlier this evening, uh, it, I believe it was Jen, uh Strong. Uh, this is a nationwide challenge across the United States uh with recruitment and retention. And uh, there isn't necessarily that silver bullet, that one particular item that is going to solve our problem. Uh, I think we all can agree that uh while we wish that was the case, uh unfortunately, it's not going to, to be the case. Uh, the second challenge is the departmental bandwidth uh in particular for exit interviews. Exit interviews right now are currently being done through an online survey and that is a hit and miss with people who leave. Some people take the time to complete them and provide us information that is helpful to us. Uh, other times people don't have an interest in doing that. Uh, if I think you really want to have an effective exit interview, you almost need the face-to-face interaction. And in order to do that, that's going to take some time uh with staff to sit down uh with human resources uh to talk about why are you leaving, what was your situation, that type of thing. Uh, one of the things that we began looking at very closely were reasons why people were leaving the organization. Surprisingly, maybe not so much, the number one reason on through the uh exit interview uh system that's currently being used, no reason was provided. So people are just going out and going through the motions to fill that out. Uh, the second was personal, uh, third was other employment and fourth was a tie between retirement and medical personal reasons. And then the fifth most uh used reason was relocation. Um, so to date uh for this school year, we've had a hundred and thirty-nine uh people leave the district. And uh, we, again, we've broken that down into a variety of areas relative to the groups, the type of termination, whether it be a resignation, which was eighty-one percent, retirement, which is uh twelve percent, and then termination, which is six percent. One of the other things we looked at and found very interesting was the length of service uh relative to when people were leaving. Um, less than one year of length of service, forty-seven percent of a hundred and thirty-nine people had less than one year uh of service. Uh, one to two was sixteen percent and then three to five was thirteen percent. And then obviously, as you move forward, uh those percentages went down. Uh, so what we're trying to now look at is what is the reason why people are leaving in such a short period of time? What is it that's driving individuals to feel that they're not going to spend the, the time in the, in the position and are just going to leave after less than twelve months? So that will be something I think that we will want to focus on through exit interviews moving forward as well.
Is there been, yeah, a question?
No.
Do you have a breakdown of, like, were those certified or were those um classified staff members majority?
Yes, so uh, leading percentage-wise uh by group, teachers are thirty-four percent out of that a hundred and thirty-nine. So there were forty-seven teachers that left. Uh, second highest then were paraeducators at nineteen percent with a total number of twenty-seven that were leaving. And then uh, third was transportation, bus drivers, bus aides, uh, they were fourteen percent.
Mr. Manuel, the, the board has had conversations, more than one, about starting um in-person exit interviews. Is there a barrier for that happening sooner than later?
The barrier is going to be the bandwidth of the number of individuals and human resources who would be able to conduct those interviews.
Okay.
That, we can overcome that. Uh, one of the challenges that you would also have with exit interviews face-to-face. For example, uh, you'll have people that will walk in tomorrow and tell you, I quit, I'm leaving, I'm done.
Yeah.
And there's not an opportunity to have that interaction. Uh, what our focus would be on obviously are those who are giving a minimum of two weeks notice that we could sit down with them and have that conversation. And, and again, we, we, we could do that. It's going to be a little bit of a challenge though, given the number of people that are leaving versus the number of people who would be available to actually conduct the exit interviews.
I mean, so even if that's uh, that's some of the case, is there, I'm assuming there's paperwork on exit? A person leaving the district, maybe they can just be asked, can you fill this out right now before you leave?
One of the, one of the opportunities uh to conduct an exit interview is with any staff that are issued uh district property, they are required to return that. So when they bring it to return it, would be an, an excellent opportunity to sit down to conduct an exit interview with them while, while they're here turning in their laptops, keys, what have you.
Yeah. All right. I'm just trying to think about, you know, think of ways to make that process. Um, because that's a key, that's a key data point in trying to figure out retention.
Yes, and, and to expedite it so that we can start gathering that data and then uh evaluating it, absolutely.
Ms. Urban? Uh, Ms. Clappin?
Uh, hi, I just wanted to say I, I appreciate your follow-up um kind of questions and investigation, President Carr. Uh, but I also want to say I appreciate, I feel like for me, and any board member can obviously correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, I feel like this is kind of the first time that I've really heard some of these numbers nailed down. So though we're not quite as far on the exit interview as I would like to be, I do appreciate some of these specific numbers. Um, you know, I do feel like it speaks to when you say, seeing how the pillars are linked together. When we're talking about staffing being a barrier for the student pillar and we know that teachers are the highest number um leaving, you know, I think it's important to hear that in one place. And then so we as a board say, okay, like this is affecting multiple different pillars. So um, yes, I agree, like more work on the exit interviews, but also I appreciate, they said some of the stats we're hearing cause it's the first time that I've heard some of these as specific as they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so for next action for staffing, uh, the one, one next action on how we will adjust our action plans process. When we initiated this whole process, we talked about recruitment and retention kind of being that one topic. And the more we discussed it, we decided that they do need to be two entirely and completely separate items under this pillar. A one-size-fits-all strategy does not necessarily work effectively. Uh, what attracts a teacher to come work at Rapid City area schools may not be what attracts a bus driver to come and work here. may not be what attracts a bus driver to come and work here. Likewise, what helps keep a paraeducator employed here may not work for a team cleaner. And so we talked about really needing to look at, are there specific recruiting strategies and retention strategies that we can begin creating and developing for specific types of positions? So for support services positions, what's important to that group of people? For some of them, it may be flexibility of schedule. For some of them, retirement isn't a big deal because for bus drivers, they may already be retired and they don't need a retirement plan. Whereas somebody who is on the professional level, that may be something that's very, very important to them. So what we're seeing in another area of human resources in, in the benefit side, are more and more organizations are exploring having that benefit-on-demand plan versus a one-size-fits-all medical plan. They're trying to come up with ways to, what's important to President Carr may not be necessarily important to Mr. Berklin, but Mr. Berklin has a different need than, than Katie does. So we need to really begin honing in on what type of retention strategies should we be looking at for the various types and levels of position within the district as well as recruiting?
No board questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So that kind of brings us to the last piece here. Just some general takeaways, things we've, we've talked about. And, and I'm realizing a few things. So first of all, I think it's super valuable that this group gets to come and, and share and, and you get to hear from them. And that's something we can build on and hopefully just have great communication for these times. I've also, things I've learned tonight, you all want more data. And, and the robust nature of that, and, and that's, that's great. I also wanted to point out that facilities is, is the fifth pillar. That doesn't mean it's number five, it's just, we went through four tonight. And, you know, Mr. Sassy gets the privilege of talking about facilities like all the time. So you'll get to hear him next week at the board meeting. Follow up with some facilities-related information for you. But those key takeaways, again.
And I just, another deeper explanation of why we didn't have facilities tonight. It is such a, a large pillar that it could have taken the whole time from the other one. And so we just started with being too long to, to add it to the other four. So we took it out and.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll have it next week.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Berklin, did you hear?
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. So, so again, just when we think about it, what does better look like? Hopefully you got a sense that as we work through this, these aren't easy things to work through, but, but we're really trying to figure out what, what does better look like? And, and how to move that forward? It is continual learning. There are no real defining solutions, but we are focused on trying to find solutions. And I think Mr. Manuel said it, there's not a one-size-fits-all. We need to find what works best in, in our school district and how we can move accordingly. And then we want progress. I, I think it's unrealistic to seek perfection. It's, it's how do we keep getting better and serving our students the best way we can through each of the pillars? So I appreciate listening to us tonight and hopefully this was helpful along the way.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to let it go, but then you said it. I didn't, I wasn't going to share it because I don't want to be contrarian, but I appreciated not having data. Because of the, because of the reasons you shared, I'm just thinking of staffing. Like, once negotiations go through, I'm sure that that's going to look entirely different than it does right now. If you looked at like, thinking of me as a teacher, if you looked at my quarter three grades compared to my quarter two grades, that's going to be entirely different. So looking, kind of thinking ahead, maybe for like this time next year, maybe we can look at like a same-to-same kind of situation. Like where are we at today in 2026? Because I, I personally think that that would be more helpful. But I did, I did appreciate hearing about some of those, some of those trends. And I, I do, do agree that it could become problematic to say, like, I think of attendance in the fall. We shared our attendance rates at the fall, it looked like we're doing a really great job. And then it, and then it dips. So I, I didn't, I didn't want to like dunk on anyone else. Like I appreciate that, but since you said everyone, I wanted to clarify that. I was good. And I did, I did appreciate the, the lack of data, which I know sounds weird, but one of the big things in stats classes, like same-to-same. And so I appreciate that.
And that's very valuable comments. A lot of what you did here was maybe we don't have the right metric. So, so that's a challenge for us too, especially when we look at end of year and year-over-year. So hopefully as we go through this process, we get much better at defining the metrics that, that matter the most to our pillars and to our district. So.
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Strasser and the DDL team because it's really valuable to have access to you guys and to hear directly from you about what's happening. I don't always feel like I know, and that might be my fault too, but I just appreciate you being here. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the board discussion? Other? Anybody has a, other? Once, going once, going twice? I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, I will forego a roll call since we have a quorum and majority present. So all in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed, please say no. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice night and be safe, stay warm.
Yes.
Yes.